Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, December 4th, 2018 Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting. We will begin the meeting with a flag salute led by County Executive Officer Todd Leopold.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move to our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda have been recommended for approval by the County Executive Department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. Anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the board taking action, and the item may be moved for discussion. Are there any items from board members that wish to be?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I wish to pull item 13A, administrative services item regarding TOT.
Okay. Are there any other items? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to remove any items on the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask the board for approval of the remaining items.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none? Oh, that's right. Thanks. It's written right here. Okay, we'll do a roll call.
Duran.
Yes.
Weigand.
Yes.
Uller.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes, thank you. Now, we'll go to item 13A for discussion. Supervisor Montgomery.
Yes, thank you. We've had a request that came in last night, just after 10 o'clock, to pull this item for discussion, and so although it appears that we have already discussed the issues that are raised in this request last time, and then in October at our board meeting in Tahoe, I did want to pull this again. Specifically, the issues that were raised were in regards to requiring a separate TOT certificate for each assessor's parcel number. We did, again, discuss this last time we did the first reading of this. There was a concern that this has been interpreted in a different fashion in the past. I think the intent of the ordinance is to actually clarify that, so that we don't have people interpreting things in different fashions. There was a concern that there would not be enough time for operators to manage this. I would just remind the board that the ordinance would not go into effect for 30 days from the time of second reading, and then there would be 60 days for existing lodging providers to implement this, so there would be a three-month timeframe for this to be implemented. There was also a request that Section 4A be modified to exclude the requirement for operators who have business licenses in Placer County, and it was asserted that that would provide better controls for the county regarding collection and enforcement of the TOT ordinance. I would note that that change would actually negate the option to lien private property owners, should that be necessary for nonpayments. It makes it frankly more difficult to audit individual properties, and that change also is not consistent with what most other jurisdictions in California are doing. I would add that if we do adopt this change, it actually creates transparency for individual private property owners. It creates the clarity requested by the property management companies around this particular issue, and creates greater ease for auditing that is transparent and understood by all parties, by county staff. There was a concern raised that this would create a significant amount of additional work, either for the lodging managers or for the individual private property owners. I have verified that this is a one-time effort that would take place over the 90 days. TOT certificates are not renewed annually in Placer County, unlike in some other jurisdictions. Once you get your TOT certificate, it's yours for life unless you sell your property or do something else. So while there, yes, might be some additional effort on the part of certain members of the lodging community, it would be a one-time effort. There was also a request that the list of items that are subject to TOT and items that are not subject to TOT, and any future modifications for that should come to the Board of Supervisors for final approval. I have verified with County Council that we can adopt the current language as it exists today, and give direction to county staff that quarterly in Tahoe, any proposed changes come to the Board of Supervisors for our review. That would not need to be written into the language of the ordinance, but I think it would meet the interests, goals of both the lodging community, and show a commitment that our Board of Supervisors is interested in following up on this. Should there be nothing on a quarterly basis, I would suggest that it does come annually for our review and approval as part of the budget process, because TOT is part of our budget process. I will point out that I did spend a little bit of time, not a huge amount, about 10 minutes, honestly, Googling some other jurisdictions. The County of El Dorado ties the certificates to an APN. The Town of Truckee requires that property managers keep a complete list tied to APNs. The County of Nevada requires that parcel numbers be tied to the TOT certificate, and the County of Mendocino also requires, their language is very clear, each hotel owned and operated by the same owner or operator and located upon a separate parcel of property described by its own assessor's parcel number shall require a separate registration certificate. In addition to the list that staff has provided us that shows other jurisdictions that require this, I would just suggest that we are not creating the wheel here. We are just using an existing wheel and putting it in place, so that our lodging providers, private property owners, and county staff can have a clear and appropriate and shared understanding of expectations.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's it.
Thank you, Jennifer. Personally, I am not in favor of deferring this. I think we need to move forward. This thing has been, this issue has been worked out over several months, in a lot of workshops and a lot of input, and we finally come to a place where we're able to approve this issue, and I'm in favor of moving forward with it. Supervisor Duran.
Yeah, quite often, you know, when these policy issues come before the board, there's always a difference of opinion as to how something should be done, and it's clear to me that Jen has done her homework as far as what other counties do, and that we're not increasing any burden on any business owner for their accounting with regards to TOT, so I'm, I'm fine with adopting it today, and I'm also fine and think it's a smart thing to have periodic check-ins, and anything that's changed in the future or wants to be changed is brought before the Board of Supervisors.
Supervisor Uller.
I'm just, I know there are some folks in the Tahoe City Office who wanted to speak to this, so I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. Anyone here in Auburn who wishes to address the issue before us? We'll open it up for someone, anyone in the Tahoe office to come forward. Good morning, Cindy.
Good morning, Chairman Holmes, and I wanted to thank all the supervisors, and especially Supervisor Montgomery, for pulling this item for discussion this morning, and it was very unfortunate that a number of our operators were confused. You're absolutely right, your staff, both here in Tahoe and your county offices down there, Doug Jastro and Jerry Gammes, have worked very hard with our collectors to try to address all the issues in the ordinance change, but there was some confusion on this particular requirement, and I can't speak to it. I'm not a TOT collector myself, but I did forward, a number of our largest condo hotels have requested some more time to work out this language. They do have properties that come in and out quite often of the rental pool, is my understanding, and that is part of the challenge with this interpretation. They have all been operating under that interpretation of if they're a professional property manager with a business license, then they are allowed to submit their APNs. They keep a list, but they do not have individual TOT certificates for those, and my understanding from a conversation with a couple of them yesterday is that many of their owners also choose to rent through Airbnb and VRBO, and it could be confusing, and I think they felt it was actually a stronger case, that those, if those were required to have independent TOT certificates for their uses on Airbnb and VRBO, and not require it when they're in a condo hotel, it would be more transparent and more enforceable. They actually thought it was going to encourage more enforcement opportunity. Now, again, I'm just speaking on behalf of them. They asked me to come this morning and forward this letter. Included in that signature list is Samir Tuma from the future Tahoe City Lodge, Brett Williams of Agate Bay Realty, Dan Tester from Squaw Valley Lodge, Tara Gallagher from the resort at Squaw Creek, Bill Dietz from Tahoe Luxury Properties, and Ron Parson from Grand La Bocan Tahoe. The intent is not to delay this or to in any way change the opportunity. They all want the TOT collected. They asked me to assure you of that. They just want to make sure the policy gets done right and the ordinance gets done right, and unfortunately, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, many of them could not attend and did not focus on this issue until this last week, so we do apologize for that. I know it caught everybody off guard, including myself, but we appreciate your time this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gusterson. Is there anyone else in the Tahoe office that wishes to address this? Please come forward. Morning.
Morning. Ron Parson for Franciscan and Grand La Bocan. I did speak to you guys in Auburn two weeks ago, and there was some conversation after I had spoken about how this was not a change, whether it's an interpretation change or whether it's a de facto language change. The change is, it is a significant change. At that time, I was only sure it affected my two properties, but it, which is about 150 units, but in, as I, people asked me about the meeting, and I explained to them what was going on, and they came back, well, that's a big change. Why didn't they listen to us when we had the one outreach meeting? And to be clear, there's only been one public outreach meeting, and that was in October. The subsequent ones were really not opportunities to provide input. This input was provided at that meeting, and we are very concerned about the process, and thank you, Jennifer, I agree, that one form of process or the other that gets the list, so it's approved by, or recommended at least by the operators before it becomes the effect of law. So I urge you to push that, this back, review it at the Tahoe meeting for approval. We're really close, but it just would take a little bit to get it exactly right. The way it is right now, it is going to take a lot more work, and I don't think it's just one-time work because of the difference between a property manager and the individual properties. In effect, it'll be easier to audit, it'll be more effective management of the properties, and it's a simple fix which is very consistent with what we already have on the books. We're not asking for a change. We're asking for this change to be reviewed by the community, so we can improve the language and get it right. As it is right now, it is going to be very convoluted, and I think create conflict between auditors, staff, and the operators, rather than having a process that benefits the three of us working together. We are interested in collecting the TOT correctly, and we need to get that to you correctly, and we certainly don't want to be in conflict with staff or the Board of Supervisors. So please send this back, have the lodging community give it one more cut, and hopefully in January, we'll have a clean cut that everybody agrees on. This one does not have community consensus.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Parson. Anyone else in the Tahoe office? I see, I see none. Back to the board. Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, it's my understanding that the resort at Squaw Creek actually already is doing exactly what we're proposing within the ordinance, which is each individual APN, they're a condo ownership, condo hotel ownership association. Each individual APN does have its own TOT certificate. The resort, however, submits one Excel spreadsheet, so they're not submitting, you know, 200 and some odd reports to Placer County, but again, it is something that is much more transparent for the property owner. They know exactly when their unit has been rented, for how much, what TOT has been collected on that. It's a process that I'm sure the resort at Squaw Creek would be certainly willing to share with other folks in their community. If not, we can certainly help the lodging community to make this clarification effective. And again, my, my intent today is to adopt the ordinance with the language as proposed, give direction to staff to bring this back to us quarterly, so that we can review any proposed changes to what is in, what is out, to bring that back to us quarterly in Tahoe, since most of our lodging community is in Tahoe and most of our TOT collections are in Tahoe, and then at a minimum, if there's nothing quarterly to report, make this part of our budget adoption, so that our board knows, again, what TOT is being collected on and what it is not being collected on. So that, that would be a motion.
All right. Thank you. There's a motion and a second under discussion. Supervisor Uller.
Thank you. I, again, as I indicated at the last board meeting, when I requested this item be taken off, that we asked staff to go back and meet with these folks. We heard from a number of them via email at the last board meeting. We're hearing from the same folks that in the two weeks intervening, the same concerns persist. These are our partners in TOT collection. These are the people upon whom we rely for appropriate collection remittance of this tax, which we use for so many important things. If they are telling us that they are not clear on what we are asking of them through this ordinance, why wouldn't we take an additional month to seek that clarity, so that everybody's on the same page, roll this thing out in January? And I'd ask this board to consider that while we're talking about this TOT ordinance, the community that we are talking about affecting with the implementation of this new ordinance is the same community with whom we are going to need to work very closely on some new initiatives up in Tahoe that are being discussed, and new opportunities to generate revenue to address some of the Tahoe-related things. And I would really want to make sure that as we have those conversations with our partners in the Tahoe Basin, that we, our board and our staff, have their confidence as we move into these new conversations around new initiatives. And right now, I think we're hearing that we don't have that confidence, and if simply putting this item off to be heard in Tahoe after staff does have an opportunity to get together with the folks listed here and anybody else that has an interest, I just don't see the harm.
Thank you. Any other comments? Supervisor Uller.
I think as a, as a clarification, and I'm going to turn to County Council on this, this would not merely be a delay of one month. If we were to change the language within the ordinance, it would have to be reintroduced at our January board meeting in Tahoe, and it would still have to go through the process of at least two readings, correct? So it would be really more like a three-month process.
Well, that, that's correct. If, if there is a proposed change to the current ordinance, we would have to bring it back for introduction and adoption. The other alternative is it could be continued as is, with the assumption or the hope that it would be adopted as is, in which case it could simply be continued. The adoption process could be continued. You're absolutely right. Any changes to the ordinance, and we have to start with the introduction.
And that process takes how long?
The introduction, you can't adopt an ordinance until five days have passed, so typically we have an introduction on one board meeting and adoption on the next.
And the second reading on the next one.
Correct.
So if we hear it in January in Tahoe, then our first meeting in February, we'll have the second reading, where we have complete, hopefully, complete concurrence from the community. It remains on consent, and it's done.
That is an alternate schedule.
Supervisor Duran, you got a comment?
No, I don't. I don't.
All right. Any other, any other comments? All right, there's a motion and a second on item 13A to adopt an ordinance introduced on November 20th, 2018, amending, amending Article 4-6 of the Transit Occupancy Tax Code. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The motion has been approved. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair. I apologize. I actually have a pretty bad cold. I'm going to head home.
Well, I appreciate you taking the time to join us this morning. I know it's kind of the last-minute thing, and we appreciate it.
Indeed, and my congratulations to Chief Morris, and I'm sorry I'm not going to be staying, or you're, wherever he's hiding. There he is, back there. I'm sorry I'm not going to stay, but I don't want to contaminate anybody else.
All right. Thank you. All right, we are now going to move to public comment. Persons may address the board on items not on this agenda. Please limit comments to three minutes per person, since the time allotted for public comment is 15 minutes. If all comments cannot be heard within the 15-minute time limit, the public comment period will be taken up at the end of the regular session. The board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the board under, under public comment? Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, supervisors. My name is Judy Isman. I live at 4985 Bell Road. I'm part of Protect Rural Placer and part of the, the group of individuals that are not for the expansion of Hidden Falls. So what I wanted to speak to you today is not about our top three concerns, traffic safety, fire safety, and the rezoning of agriculture, but what I'd like to talk to you about is the actual purchase agreement for the property, the Twilight, known as the Twilight Ride property, about a quarter mile from my home. Today, this concerns me because of the dollars that are implicated to be spent with this. Originally, through the purchase agreement, that was dated on March 30th of this past year, it shows that as of, all decisions must be made to, and notification to the seller no later than one day after by 5:00 p.m. So that's March 30th of 2019. We are coming upon a time when the EIR, SEIR, and all the other type of environmental documents have not been provided. Originally, when we met in July at the big planning commission meeting, we were told by the parks, we would get them in October. Everyone in the room heard that, but the Parks Department told us, oh, no, that wasn't it, and we will have them in winter, in the winter. So now we were told, we assumed by December, no, we were being told now we will get them in January. So January is, has many days in it, and we're curious to what the day might be when we get that, because there's only 45 days for public comment, and we can review the document and provide a rebuttal to that document, and so we are very concerned about the timing, because $10,000 was put in escrow five days after the, the date of signing, and within that, another $55,000 was put into the escrow account, and we don't want the county to lose these if this doesn't go through. We are concerned because the dollars are not just my dollars and the people that live in that area, but those dollars are from the citizens of Placer County, and I know that they come from different revenues, different budgets, as well as from federal-state governments. They're not coming from, you know, bake sales that we have, and so the dollars are very important. We just recently passed a bond here for the high schools to increase funding, so these are dollars that might be able to be better well-spent. So that is my concern about when will we see the environmental impact report and the timing of the decision that needs to be made.
Just so you know, I'm having staff looking at some clarification on that for you.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Duran, did you have?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on this whole idea of, of money. You know, I represent probably about 70,000 people down in, in Roseville, and they are part of this as well, and I think all of us, all of our communities, look for recreation opportunities. So that, you know, in, in partially clarifying my vote on the purchase of the property was basically, number one, to preserve open space and provide recreation opportunities. Now, I do want to clarify something, that my vote wasn't for something that wasn't inconsistent with the land, and I know that there are things that can be done to mitigate whatever, you know, effects people are thinking about, and my understanding is, is if there was an option to make it a non-walking trail, you would not have these ADA requirements that require concrete and lighting and all those other kinds of things, so I would, you know, I would hope that you would consider that, and I hope that the county would consider that as an option of making it, you know, a kind of rural kind of access that may be more palatable, so, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in Auburn that wishes to address the board under public comment? Morning.
Good morning. My name is Tony Durato. I represent CAL Fire firefighters in Nevada UVA Placer Unit. My number represents about 400 firefighters, and a very large percent of those reside and work in Placer County, and I want to take a couple minutes to thank and to recognize Chief Morris, as you were doing today, as a, a partner and a friend. I had some notes, and I'm probably going to just wing it, because this is coming from the heart. I first met him about 10 years ago and recognized him early on as a special kind of person, and our relationship is, by definition, potentially at odds oftentimes, and I found with him early that we didn't ever, very rarely at odds, because what drove him, what guides his principles, his duty and sacrifice and service to the citizens. And it's not just Cal, California, it's his direct supervisor, who he doesn't see, I don't believe, as, as the director of CAL Fire, or even you people. It's the citizens of Placer County, and that made him and I very easily work together as partners. So I can't express enough how valuable he, a partner he has been there, how much we're going to miss him at the firefighter level, at the labor level, and I hope you all understand, obviously you do, with today's commendation on how important he has been. Without a doubt, we don't know yet who his success was going to be. I have no doubt that that person can be qualified, capable, and amongst the best that CAL Fire has to offer to the citizens of Placer County, and that person certainly, he or her's going to want to do it their own way and chart their own course, but I believe that the time and energy and effort that he has put forth with all of you people has set us on a path for success. We are pointed in the right direction. We are set up for great things in the future, and I hope that we will continue to honor his working relationship with the citizens and the board, and continue in that direction, pick up where he left off, and take off with a running start, and build upon what you guys have all been able to do as a county and with CAL Fire and Placer County Fire. So, thank you, Chief, and I hope we can pick up and move on. Thank you for taking the time to commend him. We appreciate it.
Hi. My name is Susan. I live on Rockwell Lane in the unincorporated area of Placer County, very near Lincoln, which is also known as the Village Five area. I just am curious, on the PCCP, back December 11th, 2017, is when I first contacted Greg McKenzie regarding being able to have public review of the PCCP as it pertained to the access to and uses of the designated VOSP and VOSN lands within what would be known as Village Five, city of Lincoln is pursuing annexing into the city, which is currently the Placer County area. There are a large number of residents that live within the area who are opposed to being annexed, and we've requested to be able to review the PCCP, so we would know what access to and use of the designated zone changes that would apply to our properties should we be annexed, and I'm just kind of curious what timeframe. It's been told repetitively that it would be soon, and it looks like currently we're also exempting it from CEQA requirements, and yet it still hasn't been under public review, so I'm just, would like to know if, hopefully that's coming soon, because...
Does he address your concerns?
Okay, and the other concern I have is one of the largest developers within the area who is also a large landowner. In doing the process, I think they're maybe initiating a process of doing the tax negotiations between Placer County, Lincoln, et cetera, and it, it's just a concern because there are a lot of properties within the-
Can you address your concerns?
Okay. And the other concern I have is one of the largest developers within the area who is also a large landowner. In doing the process, I think they're maybe initiating a process of doing the tax negotiations between Placer County, Lincoln, et cetera. And it's just a concern, because there are a lot of properties within the Placer County area that are in default for taxes. I know the total dollar amount on all the APN numbers roughly over a million. And I'm just concerned that that's affecting the school districts and funding. I know that gets brought up a lot, at least at the City of Lincoln level, so...
Okay. If you could give us your last name and your contact information, then we'll have someone contact you.
Okay. Like here or write it?
Just write it down. Thank you. Anyone else here that wishes to address the board under public comment? Is there anyone in the Tahoe office that would like to address the board under public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment and move to board member and county executive reports. Mr. Leopold, did you have a report?
Yes, I have just one noteworthy item. Last week, on the 26th, we had a power outage at the Co-op Extension Commissioners Building, which resulted in just a loss of power as well as heat to that building. There was a request from the director, the county director for our Co-op Extension Program, to send two of our staff members home pursuant to code. I provided verbal confirmation of that, so just wanted to notify you that. Any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Are there any other board member reports? Seeing none, we'll now move to our 910, no, 905 timed item. This is a proclamation, impaired driving prevention month, brought forward by Twilight Abrahamson. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Holmes. Board members, Mr. Leopold, Ms. Huo, Twilight Abrahamson, Director of the Children's System of Care, and I am here, pleased to be here today. The Placer County Youth Commission, in partnership with the Coalition for Auburn and Lincoln Youth, or Cali, and Raising Placer, are requesting that your board proclaim December as Impaired Driving Prevention Month in Placer County. Here today to speak to this item are Patrick Young and Allison Marks from the Placer County Youth Commission, and Shelley Rogers from Cali. I'm going to turn it over to them.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, we are proclaim, we are requesting to, for the board of supervisors to proclaim December as Impaired Driving Prevention Month in Placer County. Impaired driving, including driving under the influence of alcohol, marijuana, and prescription medicines, possesses a significant threat to drivers, pedestrians, and passengers, and all who share our roads. In 2016, there were seven people killed and 179 injured in alcohol-related crashes in Placer County.
So nationally, the number of traffic crash fatalities caused by impaired driving has unfortunately increased, even with preventable alcohol and drug-related driving fatalities accounting for nearly one-third of all traffic fatalities. During the holiday season, incidents of impaired driving occur more frequently, as you guys know. So this month and every December, let us observe impaired driving prevention month, continuing to empower drivers to make responsible decisions and educate Placer County residents on ways to keep our roads safe and our futures bright.
Thank you.
Hi. Good morning, supervisors. Yes, I'm with the Coalition for Auburn and Lincoln Youth, and we are a community coalition working with youth parents, law enforcement, and many sectors of the community, and to prevent youth substance use and promote promising futures. So because incidences of drunk and drug driving have increased, we are committed to providing, raising awareness about these issues and providing education to prevent it. Drinking and driving is not the only danger in the road, on our roads, people who drive under the influence of marijuana, and in some cases, they are twice as likely to end up in a car crash, particularly with young drivers. And that is according to the National Highway Traffic and Safety Administration. And driving under the influence of prescription drugs is another great concern. A great example of our community working together in prevention is a new project in which Cali Coalition, the Auburn Police Department, the Placer County Youth Commission, the Coalition for Placer Youth, and the Trevor Keller Scholarship Corporation, which is a foundation started in honor of two young lives that were tragically lost as a result of an impaired driver. And so we partnered to purchase an impaired driving prevention kit. It's a go-kart kit, and it's sort of a simulator. And so in the coming weeks, we are going to launch a campaign where we will do educational activities with youth and adults in the broader community, not only in December, but in, you know, it'll be something that we can use for years to come in all the communities in Placer County. And so, lastly, I just want to thank you again for your time this morning, as always, for your support and for hearing our request. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you for bringing this forward. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak to the board on this item? You know, it's entirely appropriate that we do this in December, because I see the incidence of impaired driving seems to rise during the holiday season, and we have our fire personnel here that deal with that, with the impacts of, you know, impaired driving, and it's not a pretty sight. So I think this is very appropriate that we brought this forward, and I'll be very glad to read this proclamation. In the matter of a proclamation recognizing December 2018 as Impaired Driving Prevention Month in Placer County, whereas impaired driving puts drivers, passengers, and pedestrians at risk, and each year claims the lives of thousands of Americans, and whereas in 2016 there were seven people killed and 179 injured in alcohol-related crashes in Placer County, and whereas during the holiday season, incidents of impaired driving occur more frequently, and every December, we observe impaired driving prevention month to highlight steps we can take to improve safety on our streets and raise awareness of these preventable dangers. And whereas consumption of alcohol by drivers is highly dangerous, and drug use, including marijuana and prescription drug use, can impede judgment, perception, and motor skills used when driving. And whereas after alcohol, marijuana is the most frequently found substance in the blood of impaired drivers, fatally injured drivers and crash victims, and whereas prescription drug impaired driving can diminish an individual's performance behind the wheel and increase the risk of harm to a driver or an innocent bystander. And whereas the Placer County Youth Commission, the Coalition for Auburn and Lincoln Youth, and Raising Placer urge all of us to do our part to prevent impaired driving and keep roads safe. And whereas this month, let us continue empowering drivers to make responsible decisions and educate Placer County residents on ways to keep our roads safe and our futures bright. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed. The above proclamation was duly passed by the board of supervisors of the county of Placer on behalf of the citizens of Placer County at a regular meeting held December 4th, 2018. And I'll bring this down to you, and we'll take a photo. They're doing such a great job. I really, really appreciate their efforts. Yeah, if you don't mind. So moved and seconded to approve the proclamation. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Hearing none. We will move to the 910 county executive update on changing nature of California wildfires and a commendation recognizing CAL FIRE unit chief, George Morris III. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm George Morris, and for the past four years, it's been my honor to serve as a CAL FIRE Nevada-Uba Placer Unit Chief, Placer County Fire Chief, and Placer County Fire Warden. And I appear before you today as the Assistant Region Chief for CAL FIRE Northern Region. I'm here to brief you on wildfire activity in 2018 and to describe ongoing efforts towards building fire-resistant communities and fire-resilient forests. The 20 most deadly, the 20 most deadly, the 20 most damaging, and the 20 largest fires in California history have claimed the lives of 347 people, have destroyed 53,000 structures, and have consumed nearly 5 million acres. The last five years alone account for 166 fatalities, 39,000 structures, and 2 million acres consumed. Seven firefighters have been killed this year in the line of duty combating wildfires in California. As I mentioned to the board in June, the UC Field Station Grass Crop Survey in Uba County yielded a 38% increase over the previous year, which had been the highest ever recorded. October of 2017 was nearly unprecedented in the scale of loss in life and devastation, and leading into the summer months of 2018, the underlying fuel conditions were a harbinger for what was to come. The last 13 months have been some of the most significant fire activity in the last 100 years. Eight million acres are burned in the western United States, and approximately 1.7 million of those acres in California alone. So for some context, we have 124 million standing dead trees in the Sierra Nevada. We had a grass crop that would essentially be the fuse for what would be a bomb for the fire season of 2018. So to run down, I came before you, board, in October, late October of 2017, after losing 300 homes in Uba County and four fatalities on the Cascade Fire, at the same time that the Tubbs, the Atlas, the Nuns, and the Redwood Complexes were burning throughout the state. They ultimately claimed the lives of 44 people. In December of 2017, the Thomas Fire started in Ventura County and would become the largest fire in California history. In July of 18, the county fire burned 90,000 acres in Yolo and Solano Counties. Ferguson Fire, the Mendocino Complex, and the Carr Fire started at the same time. Carr Fire, very infamous, from Redding, destroying 1,500 structures and killing multiple people. September of 2018, in August 2018, the Carr Fire and the Hurst Fire continued to burn, and the Delta Fire started in September. And that moves us forward to November and the Camp Fire. The Mendocino Complex burning in July actually became the largest fire in California history. So here's the largest fire breakdown. Everything that you see highlighted there has occurred in the last five years alone. Mendocino Complex, as you can see, over the Thomas Fire by a magnitude of size. The 20 most destructive fires in California history account for 199 deaths, 45,000 structures, and 1.7 million acres consumed. Seven of those occurred in the last year alone, and nine over the last five years. One of these fires doesn't even make the list any longer, and it was the Valley Fire, which occurred in 2015 and destroyed the town of Middletown in Lake County. The 20 deadliest fires in California history account for 302 deaths, and so far on the Camp Fire, there's 85 fatalities. There are still 11 missing. Five of those have happened over the last year alone. Some of the pictures that you see are of the Camp Fire as we go through the presentation. So California's expended a huge amount of money since 1979 combating wildfires. You can see in this graph here, the steep increase in what those costs have been since about 2008. The emergency fund is a mechanism that the state of California has to deal with wildfires and be able to pay for their suppression, and really, a billion-dollar E-Fund expenditures are becoming the norm. So that's a little context about what I'm going to talk about next, which is the Camp So this is, what you have before you is the fire behavior map for the first few hours of the Camp Fire. Camp Fire started in an area with significant fire history and unique weather phenomena. For firefighters, a fire starting in the Feather River Canyon is an ominous prospect. Within the first two hours of the fire, a nearly continuous wall of flame impacted the west branch of the Feather River, nearly, and under a strong and dry northeasterly wind. This cast embers well ahead of the fire, falling on a receptive, dry fuel bed of vegetation. It had not rained in this area for 260 days. This map overlays the general timeframes for the evacuations that were called. What you're seeing here is about the first three hours of that fire's progression. Within 12 hours, it was nearly to Forest Ranch in the Chico area and was threatening Orville. Paradise was a town that had zoned, it had zoned the town, it was fairly large population there, between Paradise and Magalia, upwards of 52,000 people on that ridge, and they had been practiced in their evacuations over the years. In 2008, the Humboldt Fire skirted the lower end of Paradise, evacuating a third of that town. The lightning complex that would occur about two weeks later also exercised that Pence Road Corridor, which you can see in red, which are the first zones that were evacuated in Paradise. So many people were away from their homes beginning their workdays when the fire began to threaten the town. Smoke column from the approaching fire blotted out the sun, turning day into night. And if you watched 60 Minutes this weekend, you saw some footage of our firefighters engaged in there at what looks like midnight, and it's about 9:30 or 10 o'clock in the morning. This fire moved quickly through Paradise, Magalia, Concow, Bucreet Canyon, and impacted all the surrounding communities. At various times in the fire's progression, many other communities were under immediate threat, including Chico and Orville. At the height of the incident, approximately 52,000 people were evacuated, and nearly 1,500 people were unaccounted for. As of this morning, 11 are unaccounted for. Destruction left in its wake is like nothing I have seen in 23 years as a firefighter. Paradise was my hometown. I'm a Paradise bobcat. When I look at this map, I know a lot of people who lost their homes, some who lost their lives, and some who lost their businesses. Multiple generations of families, all displaced or worse. It is a terrible thing to see the landmarks of a life destroyed, and I wish it on no one. When you look at Paradise, it's easy to project its image on many of our mountain and foothill communities. From Tahoe to Lincoln and everything in between, the potential for a large, damaging, or deadly fire persists. We have talked over these past five years about the new normal and the normality of mega fires. This summer, at a briefing from the National Weather Service in Reno, a meteorologist said to me, "You CAL FIRE people keep saying a new normal. That's assuming that things have stabilized." This begs the question, so what are we going to do about it? Is it a new normal, or is it a new paradigm? I tend to see it as the latter. We are seeing climate factors accelerating the pace and scale of large and damaging fires in California. We've observed and experienced a consistent operational pattern requiring a strategic, coordinated, and collaborative approach to managing the ever-present threat of wildfire. This approach incorporates prevention, fuel reduction, prescribed fire, emergency planning, and a robust fire suppression capability. To fully leverage this approach, we have to align our priorities towards the common purpose of creating fire-safe communities and fire-resilient forests. What this slide is illustrating is there's various initiatives that are going in parallel towards that goal of fire-safe communities and fire-resilient forests. So you can see forest health, the formation of the Forest Management Task Force, which is retooling of the Tree Mortality Task Force. It's getting all of the regulatory agencies and agencies and stakeholders who have resources to bear towards the common goal of maintaining forest health and creating resilient forests. Ongoing tree removal from efforts that Placer County has led on, frankly, in the tree mortality zone. Those are all going to benefit some of that fire-resistant, fire-resistive, and fire-resilient forest initiatives we're trying here. Fire prevention enforcement, defensible space compliance. There is a personal responsibility component to all of this. If you're a private landholder, it's important that you manage your land. Defensible space is one way to do that. If your land is contiguous to your neighbors and they rely on you for their defensible space, help them out. space, help them out. New construction standards, to be able to harden structures should a wildfire impact them. And public education, as always, we are always out there with readyforwildfire.org, trying to educate people on their risk and how to mitigate that risk. Fire suppression capability. CAL FIRE is adding to its aerial fleet. We're replacing our rotary wing aircraft with the S-70I, the first of which should be coming from Texas here in the next few months. Local government preposition, which is the ability to move local government resources up and down the state. The state has always been able to do that, but this is a new funding mechanism to allow local government resources to be prepositioned. Extended Blue Book staffing, that's expanding CAL FIRE's presence to more of a year-round footing. And that is helpful because we keep saying fire season because we don't have something to replace that term with, but it seems to be more like a fire year. Legislation, there's good neighbor authority, there's grant programs, there's nearly one billion dollars that are coming over the next five years for fuel reduction projects in California. Program funding as well. Vegetation management, you've got fuel reduction activities that are going on all over the county and they are coordinated. Prescribed fire, we're seeing, when we have opportunities to do it and we have the opportunity to do it safely, we will put fire on the ground and manage the forest. Fuel break development is ongoing and there are some ambitious projects being proposed and being worked on right now in Placer County. Public and private utilities, trying to find ways on how they can shut the power down in advance of extreme weather conditions. They have their wildfire safety center and automated weather stations that are helping us track in real time the weather a little bit better than we were able to. And then new partnership opportunities. In Placer Center, we have a new fire crew that we, two fire crews that we stood up in collaboration with the California Conservation Corps. We're looking for a lot of ways to do that. And the state, an initiative is to take parolees down in Ventura and retrain them into being able to work on fire crews and then prescribe fire education as well so private landholders can take some of the initiative on their own. So those are just some of the things that are going on and I know it's a timed item, so I'll be brief with that. But I would say that Placer County has been an innovator in these efforts with the formation of the Tree Mortality Task Force, which could be transitioned to a wildfire risk reduction task force to keep each of the stakeholders engaged and in landscape and community level risk reduction. Over the next five years, a billion dollars, like I said, will be available through grants and Placer County is well positioned to be competitive for some of those funds. This concludes my presentation about the new paradigm.
I want to recognize the number of lives that the firefighters have lost protecting their communities and we're saddened that that happened, but we understand their commitment to protecting their communities. And, you know, we're in an era of climate change. I think it's time to quit talking about what caused it, but how can we adapt and how can we prevent these things from happening? And it's up to us as individuals to recognize that. And so I appreciate it for one, and I know Supervisor Montgomery, if she were here, would really want to thank you for your leadership on this and all the firefighters, fire personnel under your command. So without further ado, oh, Robert, I'm sorry, did you have?
I just want to echo that, George, and extend a congratulations to you. Appreciate all the time, energy and personal attention of taking to Placer County, including an hour with me yesterday with Brian, trying to learn more about this because obviously we are all going to have to do a lot more on a much grander scale that's been done recently regardless of how we point fingers. But so I just want to congratulate you and hope to continue to work with you in the future.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments already? So please bear with me. In the matter of commendation, recognizing George Morris III for his dedicated service and exemplary leadership, whereas Chief George Morris III served as a CAL FIRE Nevada-Yuba Placer Unit Chief and as a Placer County Fire Chief from December twelfth, twenty fourteen to December first, twenty eighteen. And whereas Chief Morris consistently went above and beyond to ensure that CAL FIRE, Placer County FIRE protected lives, property and natural resources, most notably during the twenty fifteen Lowell Fire that threatened the community of Dutch Flat, the twenty sixteen Trailhead Fire that threatened the community of Forest Hill, the devastating wind-driven fires in the fall of twenty seventeen that threatened many acres in Placer County, the Orville Dam Crisis in twenty seventeen, overseeing investigations leading to the arrest of several arsonists in twenty eighteen. Whereas Chief Morris also demonstrated his commitment to public service in sometimes surprising ways. One morning in twenty sixteen, while caught in a traffic jam on I-80 as he was driving to work, Chief Morris was waved down by a man whose pregnant wife lay in the backseat of their car in advanced stages of labor. Chief Morris escorted the family through heavy traffic to the emergency room where the baby was safely delivered shortly thereafter. Did they name that baby after you or anything?
I don't think so.
Chief Morris consistently demonstrated his commitment to building effective partnerships by working closely with the Placer County Board of Supervisors, the Sheriff's Office, the County Office of Emergency Service, the County Executive Office and other public safety stakeholders on emergency preparedness and response. And whereas Chief Morris was always available to answer questions, provide clarity of understanding to complex situations regarding county fire services and emergency response. Yet, he has also remained self-effacing, allowing his staff to demonstrate their knowledge base and to receive due recognition and praise. Now therefore, let it be known that the above commendation was duly passed by the Board of Supervisors on behalf of its citizens at a regular meeting on December fourth, twenty fifteen. And we wish you well in your promotion to Assistant Region Chief for CAL FIRE Northern Region.
Thank you. Thank you. And Chief, if you'd like some of the guys up to Assistant Region Chief.
Oh, yeah.
We can do it outside if we're not disruptive.
And thanks to all of you that serve us. We really appreciate your work.
As we're filing out, I just want to thank all of you for your leadership and for working with you over these past few years. It's truly been an honor for me. I accept this commendation on behalf of all these men and women that you see before me. It's been an honor to lead them and to be in service with them. On my way to work today, I saw a quote from George H.W. Bush, which said, "No definition of a successful life, a definition of a successful life must include service to others." And so I hope in that spirit that I was able to do that for Placer County.
You are a perfect example of George H.W. Bush. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to approve the commendation.
It's moved and seconded to approve the commendation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's passed. Okay, we will now move to the nine fifteen timed item, Community Development Resource Agency Item Three A, Twenty Eighteen Placer County Regional Bike Plan Amendments to General Plan and Community Plan, General and Community Plans. We are going to conduct a public hearing to receive consideration from the Placer County Planning Commission to amend certain general and community plans to incorporate and adopt the Twenty Eighteen Placer County Regional Bike Way Plan. Hello?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Crystal Jacobson with the Placer County Planning Services Division and the item before you today for consideration includes a proposal for a number of community plan amendments related to your board's recently adopted Placer County Regional Bike Way Plan. So the purpose of this amendment, the purpose of these amendments is really to bring these community plans consistent with that Bike Way Plan. So by way of background, in June two thousand and seventeen, the county MPCTPA initiated an update to the two thousand and two Placer County Regional Bike Way Plan. That effort was supported by a CAL Trans Regional Planning Assistance Grant Program. The county had originally adopted the Bike Way Plan in two thousand and two, consistent with the State of California Bicycle Transportation Act. The Bike Way Plan identifies Bike Way improvements proposed within the unincorporated areas of Placer County and then integrates the planning efforts with six cities here to create a coordinated regional Bike Way system. In June two thousand and eighteen, PCTPA approved the final plan and then shortly thereafter, CAL Trans accepted it as complete. And then following that, your board on October ninth of this year adopted the plan. So again, the purpose of today's item is really just to ensure consistency with our community plans and the Bike Way Plan. That said, I'm not going to provide any further detail on the Bike Way Plan since you did get a detailed presentation on the October ninth board meeting. But I do want to point out, I am joined by Stephanie Holloway with the county's Department of Public Works and Facilities Office, who's been the lead on this effort and is available if you do have questions on the plan itself. So what we did following the plan's preparation and in order to ensure consistency with that plan, we did a review of our general plan and various community plans, just to look at the Bike Way Network Exhibits, policies outlined in those plans to identify where amendments might be needed. Following that review, we did determine that the general plan was not in need of any amendments. However, we did have a number of community plans that you see listed here that needed an update. I want to point out, we have identified additional updates that are needed in additional community plans. A few of those are currently underway. We have work programs underway, including the Sunset Area Plan, the Granite Bay Transportation Circulation Element Update, and then a very small targeted update for the Meadow Vista Community Plan, which your board will be hearing about in a couple of weeks. And so what we're doing is folding any references to the Bike Way Plan and updates that are needed for those, into those work programs. So you'll see those coming forward in the future. There are some others in the Tahoe area, which we have determined that they would result in a kind of a broader scope of work. And so those will be done as future work program update efforts in the Tahoe area. So again, the intent today is just to make sure that the community plan amendments incorporate the Bike Way Plan. I do want to point out, they're really minor in nature and they really include more refinements and some inclusion of maps. So I'm just going to walk you through what they are and what's in your pocket today. So for the Auburn Bowman, the amendments include amendments to the community development and traffic circulation elements, both of those elements, to reference the plan, revise some text language reflective of the updated Bike Way facilities, and then adding this diagram that you see here. So this is really augmenting the existing trails plan that we have in that document. For Dry Creek West Placer, it's for amendments to the transportation circulation and the parks and recreation elements, again, to incorporate the plan by reference, to update the planned bicycle facilities that are listed in that plan, clarify some Bike Way Design Criteria language, adding some text about facilities and locations, and then again, to add this exhibit to augment the existing trails plan. For the Forest Hill Divide, this is the only community plan where we actually had a change in policy. So this one would again, reference the Bike Way Plan. It would, we are proposing an elimination of Policy Five A One Dash Four and the corresponding implementation measure for that. And the change here is to change a Bike Way calling, a policy that calls for a Class Two Bike Way facility along Forest Hill Road between Auburn and Sugar Pine Road. We're changing that, proposing to change that with a bike route with a climbing lane. And the reason for that is, this is a section of Forest Hill Road where the topography is very steep and so during the preparation of the plan, the cycling community had a desire for a larger facility up that steep section of Forest Hill Road. You'll also see changes to adding planned Bike Way, excuse me, that's it for that one. And then, but we do have two diagrams that I want to point out. So these two diagrams will also be included in the Forest Hill Divide Community Plan, again, augmenting the existing trails map that we have. For Horseshoe Bar and Penrin, again, a reference to the plan, clarifying some Bike Way Design Criteria language and the purpose of Bike Way facilities, and then revising some implementation section to accurately identify the Bike Way locations. And then again, this one is actually a replacement of an exhibit in the Horseshoe Bar-Penrin Community Plan. So this exhibit right here will replace the one that's included in there today. For Sheridan, the amendments are to the Parks Recreation and Trails Element, again, incorporating the plan, adding some clarifying text language, and then augmenting the trails map with this map you see here. And then finally, the last two are very, very minor, the Ofer General Plan and the Weimar Applegate Clipper Gap General Plan. I do want to point out, they're called general plans, but they do serve as community plans for these areas. And so we are again incorporating the Bike Way Plan by reference and then some minor changes, just updating facilities. So there are no maps that are included in the update for these two plans. And so for community outreach and municipal advisory council review, outreach actually launched in two thousand and seventeen. There was email and social media that was done, online workshops and surveys. If you have any questions about outreach, Stephanie would be happy to answer those. She participated in that. And then the Bike Way Plan also went through all of the municipal advisory councils in the spring of two thousand and eighteen. And then there was a Bike Way Advisory Committee that was also formed that helped, or formed to help inform the preparation of the Bike Way Plan. So with that, staff forwards the Planning Commission's recommendation to find the proposed community plan amendments to be categorically exempt under CEQA and then to adopt resolutions to these plans as listed in your staff report package to ensure consistency with the two thousand and eighteen Placer County Regional Bike Way Plan. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Supervisor Durant?
Yeah, I just wanted to get the nod from County Council that this is the appropriate way to amend these ordinances.
I'm sorry, that we are what?
That this is the appropriate way to.
Yes, it is. Yes, yes.
Any other comments from board members? Seeing none, and this is a public hearing, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Twenty Eighteen Placer County Regional Bike Way Plan Amendments to General and Community Plans. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved. Thank you so much. Now we will move to our nine forty timed item. This is a Community Development Resource Agency Item, A Farmland Security Zone Contracts to OST Properties. And who is presenting? Oh, Kelly.
Good morning.
Kelly.
Good morning, Chairman Holmes and members of the board. My name is Kelly Kettenger Cecil with the Placer County Planning Services Division. This morning, I will be presenting a request from the OST family to establish three farmland security zone contracts, PLN eighteen dash zero zero three four two, PLN eighteen dash zero zero three four three, and PLN eighteen dash zero zero three four four. The OST managed three preserves in the Clipper Gap Bowman area in North Auburn adjacent to Highway forty-nine here. These preserves are referred to in the staff report as the Cold Springs Preserve. This preserve is located in the Clipper Gap area. Here's Lake Clementine in Interstate eighty. This preserve is one hundred and sixty acres. The second preserve is the Lake Clementine Preserve. This is located in the Bowman area, not too far from the Cold Springs property. And this preserve is three hundred and fifty-three acres. And lastly, the last preserve is the Lone Star Preserve, which is in North Auburn adjacent to Highway forty-nine. And this preserve is approximately four hundred and thirty acres. The Clementine and Lone Star Preserves are currently enrolled in the Williamson Act under Contracts four ninety-nine, five oh two and five oh five. Your board will be asked to rescind these contracts in order to place those lands simultaneously into the farmland security zone contracts. The OST are proposing to place their land into these contracts, which is also called the Super Williamson Act contract because the contract term is for twenty years as opposed to a standard ten-year contract term. Agricultural operations on the preserves include seven hundred and eighty-seven acres of rangeland and about a hundred and thirty acres of permanent irrigated pasture. This supports a commercial catalog- Your board will be asked to rescind these contracts in order to place those lands simultaneously into the farmland security zone contracts. The Oosts are proposing to place their land into these contracts, which is also called the Super Williamson Act contract, because the contract term is for 20 years, as opposed to a standard 10-year contract term. Agricultural operations on the preserves include 787 acres of rangeland and about 130 acres of permanent irrigated pasture. This supports a commercial catalog operation of approximately 300 head of cattle. In addition to the cattle operation, Miller Honey Farm also places about 320 beehives on the properties. Both the cattle and the beehives are seasonally rotated across the three preserves. Staff presented to the Agricultural Commission on September 24th, and the Agricultural Commission voted unanimously to recommend to your board to approve the establishment of the farmland security zone contracts. Similar to a standard contract, each newly preserved farmland security zone contract has to demonstrate it will generate a minimum income of $4,500 annually. The Placer County Farm Advisor reviewed the proposal and prepared an economic analysis for the Cold Springs Preserve and demonstrated that it would meet the income requirements. A standard economic analysis was not prepared for the Lone Star or the Lake Clementine preserves, because these have been enrolled since the 1960s. Instead, the farm advisor provided an analysis that was based on his own knowledge. It was also based off of the beef cattle cost studies prepared by UC Davis, as well as the advisor's professional experience working with cattle operations throughout the county. The analysis is a conservative estimate and did not include the income generated from the beehives. The analysis demonstrates each of the preserves would satisfy the minimum income requirement based on the cattle operations alone. Staff finds the proposed farmland security zone contracts are consistent with both the Williamson Act ordinance, as well as the Placer County General Plan. The Oosts have been actively farming their land since 1859 and have demonstrated a very strong interest in protecting the agricultural values of their properties. To that end, the Oosts have placed their lands within agricultural conservation easements held by the Placer Land Trust. These easements do not interfere with the existing agricultural operations and also would not interfere with the establishment of the farmland security zone contracts. In accordance with the commission's recommendations, staff requests that the board adopt a resolution creating farmland security zones, PLN 18-00342, PLN 18-00343, and PLN 18-00344, and authorize the chair to execute the contracts you have in your packet based on the following findings in brief. Find that the creation of the farmland security zones is exempt from environmental review. Adopt a resolution to establish farmland security zones, PLN 18-00342, PLN 18-00343, and PLN 18-00344, totaling 944 acres on 22 parcels. And lastly, you are being requested to rescind Williamson Act contracts, agricultural preserve number 499, 502, and 505, and enter into the farmland security zone contracts. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any questions from board members? I see none. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing for any comments from the public. Anyone in the public wish to address the board on this item? I don't see anybody in the Tahoe area as well, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve item 4A, Farmland, rescind Williamson Act contracts and enter into farmland security zone contracts. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Supervisor Grant, you heard light was on.
Yeah, I just wanted to have our council clarify in layman's terms what the difference is between Williamson Act and the farm zone.
The basic difference is, the Williamson Act is generally a 10-year contract unless you automatically cancel it. The farmland security is a 20-year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the item is moved. Congratulations, Mr. Oost. Thank you. All right, we'll move to our 10 o'clock timed item, Community Development Resource Agency, Western Placer County Voluntary Interim In-Lu Fee Program, Placer County Conservation Plan, Mr. McKenzie.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. Greg McKenzie, your Placer County Conservation Program Administrator, here this morning to talk to you about the proposed voluntary interim in-lu fee program. But first, let me take a step back, go back to the Placer County Conservation Program and the elements that comprise it all, so provide you with an update, which will hopefully provide some additional information to Ms. Wector, who appeared in public comment. So good timing on having an update to the board this morning. So the Placer County Conservation Program is comprised of effectively three elements, first one being the Habitat Conservation Plan, Natural Communities Conservation Plan under the state and federal Endangered Species Act and Natural Communities Conservation Act for the state of California. The plan covers 14 species as proposed, including two listed species of salmon that occur in our salmon-bearing streams in western Placer County. It also includes the Placer County Aquatic Resources Program, so combining wetlands with endangered species in one overall program. So with that program, we have draft programmatic general permits from the Army Corps of Engineers, as well as the program establishes a framework under which wetland avoidance minimization and mitigation is established under county code, if adopted, after being considered by the board after public review, which will come hopefully in the not-too-distant future. The third item is the Western Placer County In-Lu Fee Program. We'll cover that in a bit more detail here in a minute, but first, let me get to the status update. Where are we? So the Habitat Conservation Plan, Natural Communities Conservation Plan, public review draft is ready for public review. The County Aquatic Resources Program, also in public review draft form, ready to go. We have the Corps' programmatic 404 wetland permits. They've also been drafted. We, as you all have heard about or been a part of our discussions, we ended up over a limit the Assistant Secretary of the Department of Interior set for environmental impact statements. Page limit was 150 pages for a simple document, 300 pages for a complex document. But because of all these elements, including the Corps of Engineers findings, including the state, including U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, EPA, Corps of Engineers, National Marine Fisheries Service, obviously a very large and complex document, roughly 942 pages. Good news is, we received a waiver, one of three in the nation. So consider ourselves very fortunate there, and thanks to everybody that helps achieve that waiver. So that was granted on September 17th. We delivered to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service the public review draft, EIR, EIS, on November 8th. So where are we at in the process? All these documents are sitting here. We think we're ready to go to public review. We delivered everything, for the most part, to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and here we are, we're waiting for them to complete briefings with Assistant Secretary, with the Regional Director, a new process that's currently in place. The meeting between the Fish and Wildlife Service and their Regional Director occurs on December 12th. All that goes well. We expect to then go to DC and be up to the Federal Register before too long. But it is a new process, which we don't control. Much like most of these processes, we're unfortunately subject to the timing of the state and federal agencies. So, once we do get listed in the Federal Register, that will start concurrent public review with the Federal Register listing and locally for CEQA purposes, so CEQA, NIPA, public review of the EIR, EIS. That's a mouthful. Any questions on the update before I move into the in-lu fee program?
Any questions from board members? I see none.
Okay. So, Western Placer County In-Lu Fee Program. Two notes for the record. Number one, you should have before you a letter received last night from the West Roseville Development Company for your consideration. And note number two, late last week, we did receive additional comments from the Corps of Engineers on the in-lu fee program. I'm bringing the in-lu fee program forward to you this morning as an item that effectively allows you to give the county CEO the ability to sign the program instrument if in substantial conformance with the final document after we've satisfied the last remaining comments with the Corps of Engineers. I'm hopeful we're down to one or two items. Hopefully, those changes that they have aren't significant and don't send us out of substantial conformance. If they do, we'll come back before you for consideration of those changes. So in 2008, Placer County staff was directed by the board to begin preparation of the Western Placer County In-Lu Fee Program. It's a program that brings in and couples together wetlands and endangered species mitigation by design. Since then, in 2014, because of the status of the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan Project, they made a request to the county, board supervisors directed staff to prepare an interim in-lu fee program. So that is what is before you this morning. We did that with the support of the state and federal regulatory agencies. Lot of work has gone into that. It's gone through dramatic changes, through all those negotiations. But at the end of the day, it is an interim voluntary in-lu fee program. I'll get to why interim, why voluntary here in a minute. But it is established and consistent with the federal compensatory mitigation rule set by the Corps of Engineers and the U.S. EPA. It allows for three different types of mitigation. It allows for mitigation banks. It allows for in-lu fee programs, and it also allows for permitting responsible mitigation. In this case, an interim voluntary in-lu fee program allows the county as the sponsor, as a public agency, to collect fees and mitigate for impacts to aquatic resources, wetlands, consistent with the county's PCP conservation strategy. It was a very important element to us. If we bring forward an in-lu fee program in the interim, it must be consistent with our conservation objectives and strategy and cost and funding program proposed in the PCP. So the program instrument is to be signed by the agencies, who will ultimately release credits in the interim, and those with regulatory authority are the three at the bottom, so the Central Valley Regional Water Quality Control Board, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and although they don't technically issue credits, the U.S. EPA would also be signatory to the program. So why voluntary? Why interim? So it's an interim period in between now and when the PCP would be considered and approved by the board and permits issued by the agencies. It allows us to begin early implementation of a conservation strategy. There's already projects out there who need mitigation. Why not have this program in place that allows them to mitigate through an in-lu fee program even prior to the PCP coming into place? Helps us work through some of the mechanics of implementation, get used to working with the agencies. Why voluntary? Well, it's voluntary because in this interim period, there are mitigation options. There are mitigation banks, there are other in-lu fee programs, NIFWIF being the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, currently operates an in-lu fee program with a service territory in Placer County, or covers Placer County. And then there's permitting responsible, so somebody requiring a wetland permit from the Corps of Engineers can go out and propose, design, build, maintain, monitor their own mitigation projects. So there are options out there, options available to not only Placer Vineyards, but other development projects within West Placer. So, advanced credits. PCP is not yet established, we have the ability to collect fees, but we have to collect fees in order to design, build, maintain, monitor wetland mitigation projects. The Corps of Engineers and the interagency review team has said, yes, Placer, as a public agency, we do have trust in you that you will make good on those advanced credits under the terms of the in-lu fee program and ultimately the PCP. So they are willing to grant us advanced credits to help us get the program underway. Also within the in-lu fee program are a couple of things. First is a fee-credit agreement. It's the standard, basically, agreement that the Corps of Engineers requires for anyone, whether you're buying mitigation bank credits or in-lu fee credits. It sets forth the terms of buying and selling and transferring those credits. It's a template in here, such that we can fill in blanks as we need to, change project acreages, make sure we're providing the mitigation that's necessary. We also, because we're in the interim, we have an interim fee agreement. This is also a template. It covers the other fees and contingencies that are required, because our PCP Nexus study, our PCP Cost and Funding Program, has not been vetted by you all. This is, gives us the ability to work with project applicants to sign on and say, hey, we know the PCP is not yet approved, we want to mitigate under the terms of the PCP and be consistent. This is the mechanism that allows us to do that with applicants, should they so choose to use the program. In that interim fee agreement, because again, the PCP, Cost and Funding Program, Fee Program, Nexus are not yet finished, or at least to the point that you can consider and approve them, and as well as the agencies, we've included a contingency. And so this is basically, it's the PCP Fee Program plus a contingency on top of that, those fees. So if a project comes in, we've not collected enough, they would owe us. If we've collected too much, we would owe them a credit back.
So this is just a placeholder?
This is effectively an interim placeholder.
Okay. My question to you is, how does that placeholder affect these two folks that have wrote, written letters? Are they included in this or not?
So the West Roseville Development Company, the letter I have in front of me, they are a mitigation bank. They own a mitigation bank. It's been in the county for 10, 15 years probably now. Don't recall exactly. Their establishment date is the Toad Hill Mitigation Bank out Sunset West. Can we buy credits from a mitigation bank? We can buy credits through mitigation bank. We've allowed that contingency and written it into the PCP. It's not an easy one to get all the state and federal agencies to agree to, but what we've said is, okay, state and federal agencies, if we propose to use a mitigation bank, it has to be consistent with the PCP. It has to be in our conservation, our RAA, or Reserve Acquisition Area. Okay, check the box. Good there. Does it meet? Does it have the wetland types, the species, things that we need? So, long story short, yes, we could go to them if we could come to terms, in terms of costs, management, all those things.
I get from the letter that they believe that they're being taxed twice. Is that, is that correct? Or is there an exemption for them?
As staff, I don't necessarily understand their perspective on being taxed twice, or that perhaps somehow a project might be taxed twice.
Supervisor Wargant has a comment?
Yeah, Jack, I've read both of the letters, the West Roseville one thoroughly, because I've had it the longest, and, you know, and I've personally spoken with wild ones, and frankly, there's not much in either of the letters that I think is accurate.
Yeah, and that's why I was just trying to, and I've dealt with wild ones before in purchasing mitigation credits from them. So no, I'm trying to figure out what their beef is.
Yeah, they refer to a subsidy, and, you know, basically, an applicant has to get a permit. Now they have another option. If this is approved, they can pay an in-lu fee, they can go to a bank, they can present mitigation that they have acquired and proposed to have managed. That's just another option. I just, I mean, I think I understand why they're doing what they're doing, but their letters, to me, don't make any sense.
Yeah, I appreciate your viewpoint.
So I will note, the 2008 compensatory mitigation rule that sets forth how you mitigate includes lots of avoidance, minimization, mitigation. It also says that mitigation banking is a preference. It's not mandatory item. These items are the items that avail themselves to applicants. So in the fee programs, mitigation banks permitting responsible. The Corps of Engineers is actually the one who decides where and how you mitigate. So applicant comes forward, says, hey, I'm going to mitigate in the Placer County Conservation Program interim in-lu fee program. If they agree, they direct them through their mitigation to mitigate through us. If they say, no, I prefer to use a bank, mitigation bank. There is a new mitigation bank in the county, the Antonio Mountain Ranch Mitigation Bank just recently approved. I know a project in Placer Vineyards that is choosing to mitigate through that bank instead of through potentially our interim voluntary in-lu fee program. So there are options. So the actions before you today, so basically to find that the Western Placer County Voluntary Interim In-Lu Fee Program is exempt from CEQA, to adopt a resolution proving implementation of the. of the Western Placer County In-Lu Fee Program, approving in substantial form the Western Placer County In-Lu Fee Program enablement instrument, and authorizing the county executive officer to execute the final program instrument in concurrence with county council and risk management. Third one, to approve the use of the fee-credit transfer agreement and its template, and authorize the community development director to execute those in cooperation with applicants who are choosing to use the program. Fourth, approve the use of the interim fee agreement template and authorize again the community development director to execute the same for projects qualifying for use under the program. And lastly, to authorize community development director to collect those fees associated with those agreement, deposit those into a program account that will be established in the county treasury. So with that, I'm available for questions, public comment. I will stay in close.
All right. Any other questions from board members? I see none. I'll open it up to the public for public comment regarding this item. Good morning again.
Hey, mine's quick. Just back to the public review period, I see that there was an exemption for the 942 pages waiver, and it appears that the logical process is to allow for 60 days to review up to 300 pages. Is it possible to get an extension of the public review time being that that's triple, actually over triple the amount? So I don't know the regulations, but it just seems like three times the amount of work.
I have no comment on that. Did you have any?
Yeah, so the, the basis for the public review comment period on the EIR/ES alone with the federal agencies, so in this case, Department of Interior, the federal register process for them for an HCP and CCP is 60 days review period. So we're required to come in parallel with that. Obviously, that review time to us ultimately becomes much larger because we first get public comments on the EIR/ES. We then have to respond to those comments. Ultimately, we go to the planning commissions for all of the permittees, ultimately to the Board of Supervisors. So that process is obviously much greater than the standard 60 days.
So there'll be more opportunities for people to speak to this. Okay, good. Thank you. Any, well, Mr. Terry Davis, good morning.
My name is Terry Davis. I've been a member of the Biological Working Group for the PCCP since the year 2000, representing the Sierra Club. And I wonder if it's okay if I speak a little more broadly to the PCCP at this time. First of all, I've kind of been alerted to some confusion about who speaks for the Sierra Club on this issue, what the Sierra Club position is. The, the first one, I can speak very plainly. I am the spokesperson for the Sierra Club on this issue. No doubt about that, designated. As far as the Sierra Club's formal position on the PCCP, we're going to be following our usual practice, and that is to get well into the environmental review process, if not to the end of it, before, you know, taking a formal position. I want to say that the PCCP, speaking personally, has a great deal to offer the environmental community. To me, it's really simple. Mitigation would be predictable and effective, and to me, that kind of says it all. In addition, we see a limit to sprawl. We see an urban edge in the long term being presented through the PCCP. I mean, those are critical things to me. The PCCP has been, over 18 years, has been a personal journey. Over the past 20 years, as many of you know, I was involved, or I guess I should say instigated, a number of litigations against projects. It's not something I'm necessarily proud of, but we were felt that we were not getting adequate mitigation. We saw no limits to sprawl, and we felt it was our only option. As I've served on the Biological Working Group over the years, especially after a commitment was made to a map of the reserve acquisition area, I became increasingly convinced of the integrity of this plan. So as you probably, many of you also know, our last two lawsuits were settled on the basis that they would use the same mitigation strategy as was represented in the PCCP. Since then, in recent years, I really, I have lost any interest in litigation in West Placer because we have the PCCP, looks like it's going to be adopted, and I, and I am, I am comfortable with that. After all, it's projects that come forward and that are going to pay the fees to build the reserve system, those interconnected reserves, large reserves that is so much better than what we've been getting through small onsite avoidance areas or, or isolated patches. I, I know the plan benefits economic development, you know, there's no doubt about it, and I have no problem with that. I think that this is a win-win for both building industry and the environment, and that's a good thing. I don't think we would be here at this point today if it wasn't a win-win. Opportunities like this don't come around very often. And I kind of think of it as now, at this point, for skeptics of the PCCP, if as a kid you went to one of these old-fashioned merry-go-rounds, you try to get the horse on the outside so that you can grab the brass ring. And to me, this is, this is the opportunity, grab the brass ring, you know, don't blow it. And I do want to say in terms of the in-lu fee program, I think it's absolutely essential. The PCA will need the flexibility, the funding to grab strategic parcels that may not be of, obviously of great value, but are connectors, are agricultural land, connect reserve areas. You know, they, they need those funds to have that flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. That was very nice. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else in the audience which should address the board? Good morning.
Good morning, supervisors. Clark Morris from the Cox Castle Law Firm, representing the Placer Vineyard Specific Plan landowners. I'm a natural resource lawyer. I've been practicing in this area for about 30 years. I do most of my time in wetlands and endangered species. I've been working on Placer Vineyards since 2006, which makes me a relative rookie in this room. We're here in support of the interim in-lu fee program. You know, one of the great challenges in doing wetlands and endangered species work is integrating the requirements of the Corps of Engineers on the one hand and Fish and Wildlife Service on the other. It's been a tremendous challenge around the state and really around the country, and this in-lu fee program allows it to happen in a way that is truly unprecedented in the state of California. It allows us to link our endangered species mitigation with our wetlands mitigation under one umbrella in advance of adoption of the PCCP in the way the Sierra Club, Audubon, and others have asked us to do. So it's really critical to us. Right now, we are beginning to receive actual permits from the agencies. We have some permits from the Fish and Wildlife Service. We have a draft agreement or two from the Department of Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife. Corps of Engineers is getting ready. So Placer Vineyards is really ready to go. We can't afford to wait until the PCCP is adopted. So this in-lu fee program really allows us to step up to the plate, write some big checks, allow Greg to get the PCCP program going, acquiring land, allow us to get off into our business, which is actually developing homes. So it's, it's really a critical point for us right now. Just one word on the, a letter from the West Roseville Toad Hill Bank Plan. I looked at the web. They have about 10 acres of vernal pool preservation available. We need hundreds of acres. They have no land cover mitigation available. We need thousands of acres. They have some wetland restoration available in the range of about 35 or 40 acres. We need hundreds of acres. So we're in support of mitigation banking, but that bank doesn't come close to doing what we need for Placer Vineyards. So I'm available for any questions, but we are here in support.
Thank you. I see no questions, so thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board on this item? Is there anyone in Tahoe? Okay, I see none. Before we move forward, I just want to recognize Lauren Clark here that has been, this has been part of, part of his life for a long time. So thanks for being here, Lauren. All right, I will entertain a motion.
Move approval of staff recommendation.
It's been moved and seconded to approve staff recommendation for item 5A, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, as reflected in the staff report. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item is moved. Greg, thank you so much for meeting with me and clarifying some of the issues for me and for presenting a very clarifying staff report. I really appreciate that. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
So that concludes our timed items until our 1 o'clock timed item. We'll, what? Oh, man, I'm moving ahead again. I'm forward-thinking. Okay, well, that doesn't conclude our timed items. We have a 10:15 timed item, County Executive, North Lake Tahoe Regional Local Housing Mixed Use Project.
Hello. Good morning, Chairman Holmes and members of the board and staff. Jennifer Merchant with the County Executive Office, pleased to be here this morning for your 10:15 timed item. All right. So the action requested today is to authorize a county executive officer or his designee to enter into negotiations with Related California and the Pacific Companies pursuant to RFP number 100044 for developer agreement related to the property located at 3205 and 3225 North Lake Boulevard in Tahoe City, otherwise known as the RT Nahas property. The location is right at the top of Dollar Hill and adjacent to the 80-plus acre site that is owned by Placer County, also known as the Firestone Property, where you just did a ribbon cutting in October for the Dollar Creek Shared Use Bike Trail. The project goals for Placer County are numerous, but I think the best way to, to sum this up is that the overarching goal of the potential project is to create achievable local housing for a range of income levels and lifestyle needs at a site that is in the heart of the North Lake Tahoe community. I use this slide often in my presentations, really to remind the board of the income levels for different ranges in Placer County, and to point out that with the median home price in Placer County hovering around a half a million dollars, that means that families of four fall short in their ability to purchase a home by more than $100,000. In some corners of the county, like where we're proposing that we develop a project in the North Lake Tahoe area, the median home price is in excess of that amount. I just looked at the quarter three data from the Board of Realtors, and the median home price during that quarter was $705,000, up a little bit from the previous quarter. So I'd just like to roll through quickly the process history and timeline here. On the 24th, your board authorized material terms that would lead to a purchase and sale agreement that your board approved on August 28th. That agreement was signed by both parties on the 30th. On September 4th, your staff issued a request for proposals seeking an affordable housing developer for the site. On November 16th, four developer teams were interviewed by a seven-member panel. I'd like to point out that that panel consisted of three residents who are engaged in workforce housing in the North Lake Tahoe region, as well as four county staff people. And then on November 26th, the top-ranked or most highly qualified developer was notified. Take a little bit more time on this segment here because I'd like to talk about the roles of the different partners in this development team, as well as talk about their qualifications, especially as it relates to developing in the North Lake Tahoe area. So the best qualified proposal did come from Related California in partnership with the Pacific Companies and Dinsmore Sierra. I'd like to talk a little bit about their roles. The Related Company will serve as the principal for the development approval part of the project. And TPC has a couple different arms, as you see here under the qualifications portion. They plan to, under their construction arm, serve as the principal for the engineering and construction aspect of the project, and its affiliate, Pacific West Builders, will be the general contractor for the project. Dinsmore Sierra will lead the effort to develop 14 single-family residences on-site. Those residences, which I'll show you in a schematic part of the concept proposal coming up here, face Village Drive, which is the, the, kind of the heart of the Highlands Neighborhood or the entrance or gateway to the Highlands Neighborhood. And those would be affordable to working individuals and families in the community. So the qualifications of the different partners in the team, Related California was really founded on affordable housing. They have constructed about 13,000 homes or are in process of constructing 13,000 homes in the, the state of California. They have a significant commitment to green building and achieving lead or near-lead standards. The Pacific Companies really focus in the Western United States on commercial property development as well as market rate residential. They do have an arm, PWC, which is their affordable housing arm, and that's who would be really focused on this project, along with their construction arm that would be managed locally, as well as providing the general contractor services for the project. Dinsmore Sierra LLC, the principal of that is Darren Dinsmore. For any of you who have been around planning in the Tahoe region for any time back into the early 2000s, Darren led and provided consultant support to Placer County in developing its place-based planning, which led into the downtown centers that ultimately got approved by TRPA as part of our area plan update. So he's very engaged in planning in the region and has also done a lot of progressive things regionally in the Western United States, specific to smart growth and providing affordable by design. I, I would like to talk about the local experience from all of these developers. Kings Beach Housing Now was the DOMAS project, and the principal person, the, the local contact for Related is a former DOMAS employee and led the, the project in Kings Beach. That was a 77-unit scattered sites project, five different sites. Frishman Hollow and Henness Flats and Truckee, those are 32 units and 92 units respectively, were fully managed and constructed and financed through TPC. So they have experience in the region. They also managed and constructed the Aspen's Project at South Lake Tahoe, which consists of 48 units. So we've got a lot of Tahoe-Truckee Tahoe Basin experience in this team. So the initial project concept, this is what was proposed in the, the proposal that was submitted to Placer County, is for up to 206 units. Those would consist of 192 apartment units and small building clusters, and then you can see the, the variation here between one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units, as well as the 14 single-family residences that are affordable by design. And those are mostly affordable by design based on the size and the configuration of the, of the units. On affordability, there is a span of affordability proposed with this project concept from 30%, which is the very low of average median income, to what we call in the Tahoe region currently achievable. And John Hester, the chief operating officer from TRPA, presented this to your board back in October, but I do want to, to remind the board in Placer County, according to TRPA, what, what does achievable mean? The Mountain Housing Council recommends that it go up to 195% of median income. TRPA, in order to access their bonus unit pool, has divided a little bit of a different hybrid on that for the different jurisdictions in the Tahoe Basin. So for local achievable multifamily, which is what you would see in the apartment complexes in any kind of for-rent product, would be up to 140%. And this is based on a gap analysis that TRPA did in support of their recent plan amendments. And then for single-family residences, for-sale product would go up to 216%. So with this project concept, Placer County would be able to access residential units out of TRPA's pool, which out of TRPA's pool, which means we wouldn't have to use our residential units that we have set aside currently for market rate. Okay, so here's a copy of the initial project concept, and I wanted to point out, can I do it there? That's going to work better here. A long Village Drive here, and this is Highway 28. There's Fabian Drive, which is the entrance into the neighborhood. Village Drive is the main corridor that is the gateway to the neighborhood. That's where they're proposing to put the single-family residences, so that the community, the Highlands Neighborhood feels comfortable with the development and that it looks like what they see in their neighborhood today. Then you see the proposed apartment buildings. They're small units that are clustered around the main thoroughfare through the property. You see on the corner, a proposed green space that could include water quality and community building. And we can talk more about the inclusions, but I wanted you to at least see this initial project concept. I think it is important to mention here that this is the concept that was proposed. It's likely that the final project is to look a little bit different than this, maybe significantly different than this, based on community feedback, based on financing, based on the environmental review process. The number of units proposed is close to the maximum allowable on the site, given the density bonus that TRPA allows. So the proposal could be scaled back. I don't think I'd recommend cutting it in half, but that sort of thing will be analyzed as the project goes forward. And one of the questions that the proposer was asked during the interview process is, would you be willing to scale back or change some of the types of units? Would you be interested in developing duplexes or other kinds of units, maybe townhomes? And they were interested in that, and that's what will really get fleshed out through the environmental review and the community feedback.
Supervisor Gilroy, did you have a comment?
Just a quick question, in terms of this initial proposed concept, do we have some coverage limitations that are being reflected in here? It just looks like there's an awful lot of...
Yes, there are coverage limitations, and I think that they have not been assessed for this design. So that would be part of the environmental review, to see what we could do. I believe with this site plan, you see the parking out in front, there may be opportunities to put parking underneath to save coverage, and, you know, they have not engaged yet an engineering consultant, and so that will come along with the review process.
Okay. And then I'm just, I'm curious about something you just said in terms of cutting the number of units on the site. Why would we want to do anything other than maximize the site?
Yeah, I think that that is a really good question, and that is what the review panel was considering when it was assessing all of the different proposals. Of course, there was a range of concepts put forward, from something that was quite a bit less than what would be allowed on the site to up to the, close to the maximum. You know what, certainly the return on our investment would be greater with a larger number of units, but I think that other things we'll be taking into consideration is feedback from the community and the environmental impacts of a larger project on that site. As I know I've presented to you before, a project that had 128 units had previously been approved on this site. So if we went with the full amount that was suggested in the concept proposal, it would be a little bit higher than that, but, you know, certainly still within the standards that TRPA has prescribed for the site.
Okay, thank you.
Robert?
And if I could just quickly add on to that, it seems to me that, I know it's very early, but I just want to add that pending the environmental constraints and the standards, those kinds of things, it seems like a very high priority. I'd be to maximize the number of units we're going to do to the extent we can do it, so I just wanted to take the advantage of adding that to it.
Thank you for that feedback. Okay. And this one kind of hones in a little bit more on the single-family residence component. This is the one that goes along Village Avenue, and I found this really an interesting concept here. You see that the, two highlights of this, maybe three, the affordability by design first, they're smaller-sized units, just over 1,000 square feet, but they pack a lot into those units where you can, with one of the options have two bedrooms, another option, three bedrooms. They all provide this space in the back that could be either parking or a accessory dwelling unit. And that is, other than the size of the proposed building envelope, would provide for income that would help an owner offset their mortgage payment. So that's part of that design, and, you know, if you had a single studio unit in the back, you could probably, based on today's market, get about $1,000 a month for that, and that would really significantly help any buyer offset their mortgage payment. You also see that in the back, that the properties are alley-loaded, and what that means is that the front porches and the fronts of the buildings present to the Village Drive road, so that the people who live in the neighborhood are accessing by the back door and seeing the front porches and pedestrian access in the front. So it's a much more pleasing development concept than the real auto-oriented concept that you see in most single-family residences and neighborhoods. So some of the proposed onsite amenities that I alluded to in that initial graphic, a community facility with a multipurpose room, including a kitchen, a laundry area, and a computer lab for students, stormwater treatment onsite, a village green with playgrounds, picnic area, barbecue pits, community gardens, a dog run or dog park, landscaped paths, and those paths could connect to, make a pedestrian connection to the Dollar Creek Shared Use Trail. So we're making use of that through this project concept, connection to our bike trail system. And there's actually potentially funding that could be made available to the project based on that. So the public outreach plan in Tahoe, as you know, is always an important component of any project. They are proposing a series of workshops in several phases, in addition to the workshops that the county would hold at NITRAC and other public meetings, in addition to the CEQA and TRPA process that includes a planning commission and the governing board, as well as your Board. So they've got three phases here. The first initial phase is meeting with the local neighborhood to understand their desires for the property and any concerns. They would then come back with a concept vision, including zoning and some alternatives for the broader community's review, and then provide additional design and feedback in a third workshop prior to finalizing any project for the site. Then they've got some post-entitlement phases that include construction and working mostly with the adjacent communities on, you know, the impacts to those communities. And then the final phase, once the project is completed, is the lease-up, so figuring out how to get people into those homes. A little bit on the project cost and funding gap, we've talked already about the property purchase at $3.6 million. We are getting close, but we still have $1 million not yet identified. I've been working with the Martis Fund and other partners to understand their interest in participating in this project, either on the property purchase side or on the construction side. Still working with them on that. The specific project development proposed concept from the developer, they're estimating just under $70 million total project cost, so it's a significant project, and an estimated 15.6 funding gap. And I would like to talk a little bit about how we would try to approach that funding gap and close it. That's usually what you see where you go out and you try to find some grant funding for the project, whether it's some of our SB2 money through the property transfer tax or the new Prop 1 or Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities or No Place Like Home Grants. We would be shaking the trees and try to fill that gap. On occasion, the developer would ask for fee offsets or deferrals in order to get the project in line and in queue. They are proposing phasing the project in a couple pieces and using 9% tax financing, as well as 4% tax financing, and the project will change based on that financing and vice versa. So that remains to be seen. That gap could definitely change, probably for the better, based on those scenarios. And then the proposed project timeline, in the green here, I'm noting for you the project purchase date, so that you're aware of where that fits into the total timeline. The investigation period with the refundable deposit ends on February 26th. So we will be wanting to make a decision on whether we continue with the purchase of the property sometime between now and February 26th. But related to the developer selection and moving the project through the process, we're starting today, and then you see at the very bottom, without going through in excruciating detail every line there, we're looking at lease-up and sale of the properties in the fall of 2022. So I think this is my last slide. Happy to answer any further questions, accept public comment, and have your Board consider an action on this item.
Supervisor Grant has a question.
Yes, thank you, Jennifer. And as supervisor Montgomery's Brown Act connection, which means that only her and I can talk about this pursuant to Mr. Brown, I can assure you that she's very supportive of this moving forward, and in her words, she's thrilled to death that it's being teed up for success. So that being said, I would like to move this forward.
Thank you.
Any other Board comments before I open it up for the public? All right, I'll open up the public comment section. Is there anyone in the Auburn area that wishes to address this item? I see none. Now it's time for the people in the Tahoe office to come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. And Jennifer, hello. My name is Heidi Alstead. I'm the Director for the Martis Fund. We are an organization that provides funding for habitat restoration, open space, and workforce housing. And we've been talking with Jennifer. She provided a presentation at our Board meeting in November, and so I just wanted to say I appreciate this process and that we will continue working with Jennifer during the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wish to address the, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Rick Stevens. I live in Truckee, and I am also on the Airport Board, which, the day after you authorized going into this option agreement, the Airport Board authorized $500,000 to contribute to this project because the unanimous result is of that vote was that the airport recognized that this is the single largest opportunity to develop housing in the Tahoe Basin, and we encourage you moving forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Good morning, Eli Waller. Good morning. Eli Waller, North Tahoe resident. I'm pleased to see this project on North Lake Boulevard go forward, but with that said, I'm hoping for real transparency, community involvement, and if necessary, compromise from both the community and the development team. We need to improve stakeholder and public engagement and build trust at the inception of this project. A lot of my questions have been answered. I'll go on. I will turn this in electronically. From what's online, it appears that the lead, Mr. Witt, I'm not sure how he pronounces his name, has a background in a portfolio to help accomplish a suitable project. He has some team members familiar or somewhat familiar with unique and stringent Tahoe ordinances. I was previously on a community team for a proposed affordable complex in Tahoe Vista several years ago with Pacific Companies team. It was not successful in compromise, and I believe the project's demise was based on the high density and its location, close to a residential area. It was 152-unit apartment complex on 12 acres, fairly similar to this one. I think your biggest challenge is going to be the large increase of traffic and the impact on the local community and also onto Highway 28. With that said, Pacific Communities, as Jennifer presented, did Frishman Hollow and Henness Flats with a recreation area of 2,500 square foot playground for children. That's what we need to see with this kind of complex as we're addressing teachers, firemen at that income level with young families. We need to consider this open space and maybe have to eliminate some units, just to be sure this happens. Also, Mia Kang, now a Senior Vice President at Related, built within the community character of Kings Beach, a properly-sized, family-friendly complexes in the grid, when she was the President and co-founder of DOMAS. That cannot be said for the structure on Highway 28. It has an undersized storm drain, no commercial component was built under the Community Enhancement Program that we remember, CEP. They did receive 100% coverage, but didn't, and entitlements, but I don't think they met the program criteria. I'm hopeful that the project to Dollar will provide open space, walkways, landscaping consistent with requirements, and not just pretty artist renderings like DOMAS did. Furthermore, upon engagement with the residents, most impacted is very necessary, and it sounds like you're going to go forward with that. A phasing plan should be presented early on, so we don't have the same issues that we have with projects like nearby Boulder Bay, and also something soon coming forward with the Ferrari project. We don't want piecemeal planning for this project. I'm hoping that we can achieve this through compromise to create a livable environment for the onsite and surrounding communities can embrace. Thank you for the opportunity today. And could you please post Ms. Merchant's presentation on your website? Thank you.
Jennifer, did you want to make a comment right now?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name's Norm Kitching. I'm the President of the Highlands Homeowners Association, the neighborhood most affected by the proposed development. Most of the residents of the Highlands are encouraged by the development. However, there's significant misgivings about the density that's proposed, and especially some of the comments from the Board of Supervisors about maximizing the units, maximizing the density, and the word apartment complexes was used several times. I can pretty much tell you that if you're going to put up apartment complexes and maximize, maximize, maximize density, you might get some pushback from the neighborhood. The proposed plan, with all of those cars going in and out of Village, is already a traffic bomb. If you were to go there in the morning, you'll see that there's numerous cars and buses lined up. The proposed traffic pattern is troublesome, so we would be looking for a lot of outreach in terms of the design and look and how that proposal is going to plan out. So thank you very much for listening to the comments. It'll be good to work with Jennifer to come to a compromise.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the Tahoe office that wishes to address the Board on this item? Since I just lost them. I see none. Jennifer Merchant, would you like to address some of those issues, please?
Sure. I wanted to start by noting that Mia Kang, who is a Senior Vice President with Related California, is here today, and she probably would like to make a couple comments herself. I think most of the feedback I heard was about engaging the community and understanding the environmental or community impacts of the proposed project, and I think we're certainly all prepared to do that and look forward to that conversation. So I would like to give Mia an opportunity to come up, should she desire to do so.
Good morning, Chairman Holmes. What a pleasure to be back in Placer County. Good morning, Board of Supervisors, many of you who I recognize from a couple of years ago. So I was formerly with DOMAS Development, where we did the Kings Beach Housing Project. It was one of those projects where, let's see, it forges a lifetime of memories. It was a great project. We learned a lot, and I think we really achieved what we set out to do, which was build, frankly, the very first deed-restricted affordable housing units anywhere in the basin in North Tahoe. And they continue to be filled to this day, three-year waitlist. They also won numerous awards, including the GEA Award, which is California's highest economic and environmental leadership award from the Governor back in 2012, as well as HUD's AIA National Award for Best Community Design. So with that, as far as community process, the Kings Beach project required, I think we had something back then, like 35 meetings, bilingually. I mean, we really talked a lot to a lot of folks, and we intend to do a similar outreach. But in this case, we're really looking at one large site with great potential. I think everybody recognizes the potential of this site, and I think we're... I think everybody recognizes the potential of this site, and I think we're all sort of grappling with sort of how our society has changed, with the fires that have recently happened in paradise, the opportunities that we have now to build housing. This is an opportunity to build housing where it is actually zoned, and we are not asking for anything beyond what is allowed on this site, which is density bonus. We are still within the allowable density that's been shown there. We just wanted to show you what might be possible for this site. Whether or not we end up at this exact unit, we actually have no idea at this point. We are committed to engage in a transparent process to work with the community up in Tahoe, as well as folks down here in Auburn, to engineer this project. We have great experience on our team. We understand coverage. We understand TRPA. And what we've also tried to do is we're going to be working with modular construction. So again, we're going to try to improve our efficiencies with construction and build quicker and faster so we can get the housing units on the ground. And what we also have a good fortune of is this last midterm election, we had Proposition 1 and 2 pass. And so there's a $4 billion housing bond that will be starting to hit the roads or, excuse me, be unveiled next year in 2019. So that allows for a project like this to compete for state funds that will help us build that infrastructure. So again, infrastructure is one of the most important elements to making this all work, whether it's water quality, you know, impacts to the system as well as traffic and circulation. And that piece of it is critical. And part of it is the more units you have, the less it costs per unit to build that infrastructure. So it needs to be a balance, and we're happy to show everyone what this balance is and sort of why and how we arrive at the final design. We just commit to working in an open process with the county and with the community to deliver a project that I think will be top-notch, continue to house folks, and win maybe a few more awards for the county. We're very pleased to be here. We're honored to be selected, and we look forward to working together collaboratively with Jennifer and the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for --
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Northlake Tahoe Regional Local Housing Mixed Use Project. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you to all of you in the Tahoe area for hanging in there. Now, since we've concluded our timed items until 1:00, we will move to our item number eight, District Attorney Extra Help Position, Defer Wait Period for Post Retirement Employment. Ms. Lauren Featherstone presenting. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Holmes, members of the board. Lauren Featherstone with the District Attorney's Office. So our office is currently in the process of transitioning to a new case management system. This system will allow for better integration with the courts, as well as provide a true cloud-based system. Our IT Specialist Senior has been an integral part of bringing the new system onboard and is overseeing the conversion. She has extensive knowledge of both the old and new system, and has been involved with meeting with the vendor in order to ensure the design, to ensure the design, the software to meet our office's needs. However, she has given notice to retire effective December 30th of this year. We are requesting to reinstate her on or around January 8th of next year as needed in order to assist us with completion of the transition, which is expected to be completed in June. Her absence may set the project back many months. Therefore, we are requesting your board adopt a resolution authorizing the District Attorney's Office to offer Roxanne Pointer post-retirement employment prior to the CalPERS required 180-day waiting period. Funding for this extra help position is already included in our 1819 budget, and there's no additional impact to the general fund. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from board members?
Yeah, just one for County Council. There's no problem legally for, to approve a request such as this.
No, there is not, provided that you make a finding that it's a critical need for this particular appointment.
Okay. And I think I can get my head around that, so.
Seeing no more board comments, anybody in the audience wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for approval.
Second.
It's moved to second to approve item eight, District Attorney Extra Help Position. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you for your kind patience. Now move to item nine, Administrative Services Procurement. This is a French Meadows Tree Thinning Reforestation. Well, you know what it is. And Road Reconditioning Services.
Good morning, Chairman Holmes, supervisors. My name is Brett Wood. I'm your purchasing manager. Joining with me today is Mr. Brett Storey of the Department of Public Works and Facilities. We're here today to request your approval of a qualified list based on an RFQ number 100062 for tree thinning, reforestation, road reconditioning services to be provided on behalf of various agencies for the period of December 4th, 2018, through December 31st, 2022, as well as we're requesting your authority to exercise two one-year additional renewals and authorization to execute all of those required documents. As a matter of background for you, the French Meadows Restoration, or the French Meadows Forest Restoration Project includes mechanical forest thinning operations, removal of material for biomass, reforestation, metal restoration, road reconditioning, and targeted prescribed burns for a 25,000-acre space surrounding the French Meadows Reservoir. In order to make this project a workable project, your board approved a master stewardship agreement earlier this year with the Forest Service and the Tahoe National Forest. The purpose of this master stewardship agreement is to lower the risk of catastrophic fire in the Tahoe National Forest watersheds. This project area is at the headquarters, or the headwaters of the Placer County Water Agency Middle Fork Project, which provides a lot of energy for Placer County residents in the area and in the region. There are multiple stakeholders here, as well as multiple funding partners that will be participating in this project. In order to make this project happen, we established, or we went out to the community and looked for qualified firms that could provide these services under a qualified list approach, so that as projects are moved forward, they will be competitively bid between that qualified list, making that process more streamlined and more effective for the implementation of this project. There were multiple parties that participated in the qualified list, and as a result, there are three firms recommended to be approved for this period of time. With that, we would request your board's approval and stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions from board members? This item was on consent last time, and I wanted to bring it forward because Supervisor Wagen and I have been up to the project, and it's an amazing project that we're working together with partners to remove the biomass in that forest area to protect Folsom, Folsom Lake, French Meadows. And so Brett, I didn't know whether you had any comments regarding that item.
Sure, just a couple. First of all, I want to commend your board. Way back in 2007, you approved the strategic plan to help protect the forest, and staff has been working diligently in almost every department you have, putting together projects, working with federal, state, local partners. And now we even have private entities who are beginning to contribute to it. And so I want to commend your board. Back then, you know we, half of the county is forested, and you know there's a need to protect it. And since then, we've done a lot of projects. We have, as Mr. Morrison pointed out, there are a lot of good projects in the county. This is the latest of what we hope to be several partnership projects where we can utilize funding from the federal government, the state government, private entities, and others to do a better combined effort. This is the largest we've ever looked at. It's about, covers about 25,000 acres. The actual footprint will be somewhere close to 12,000 to 15,000 acres, but even that is much larger than we've tried to tackle before. The uniqueness of it is that it fit in with everyone's goals, and that's not just the partner agencies. But we, during the NEPA, the environmental process, we reached out to environmental groups around the region, and we asked for their consultation to try to make sure that we have a project that fits everyone's needs. And I'm happy to announce that as of last week, we passed the objection period with no objections on the NEPA side, and our sequel work is close to being completed, which you'll hear about another time. And now that we have contractors, Brett can get to work and start lining up next year's project. We've already begun to, and your board will see this come back through a number of agreements now that we have this authorization. Hopefully, you vote for it. We will then come back with all of the partner agreements of how the funding will flow, and eventually, these three firms will bid on next year's project, and you will, we will hopefully have, potentially, all three of them could do the work. There's that much work up there. And we hope to hit the ground running if the weather allows us, even in May. We're trying to sneak in this year and get, because we have a lot to do. So with that, I'd happily answer any questions you might have.
Supervisor Wagen.
Just a public personal thanks, Brett. Great project, I think, in light of the horrible fire conditions, particularly in California over the last recent several years. To me, this is where the most intense focus ought to be in policies, so I'm really excited about the project. Look forward for every opportunity Placer County can use to amplify this kind of work here.
And I do. Brett, I want to thank you for your leadership on this. It's an amazing undertaking, and it's just something that needs to be highlighted, that this is actually something that we're actually getting stuff done. So appreciate that. Any other comments or questions from board members or audience? Seeing none, we'll bring it back for approval. This is the part where we approve the item. So I will entertain a motion.
Approval.
Okay, it's been moved to second to approve item 9A, the French Meadows Tree Thinning Reforestation and Road Reconditioning Services. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Okay, the item is moved. Thank you very much. Now we'll move to item 10. Health and Human Services Whole Person Care Medical Respite Unit Operations Agreement with the Gathering Inn. Dr. Rob Oldham. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Holmes, members of the board. Rob Oldham with Health and Human Services. Here this morning, asking your board to approve an agreement with the Gathering Inn to operate our Whole Person Care Medical Respite Unit from January 1st, 2019, through December 31st, 2020, for a total amount not to exceed $619,820, and authorize the Director of HHS to execute the agreement and to sign amendments not to exceed an additional 10% consistent with the subject matter and scope of work with risk management and county council concurrence. Just very brief background on this medical respite unit and where it fits into our broader Whole Person Care pilot. You'll recall back in October of 2016, your board authorized the Director of HHS to sign a revenue agreement with the Department of Healthcare Services for our Whole Person Care pilot total agreement for over $20 million over the course of five years to implement our Whole Person Care pilot here in Placer County. The Placer County Whole Person Care Pilot's goal is to test ways to better deliver and coordinate services to address physical health, behavioral health, and social services needs for Medi-Cal beneficiaries who are homeless or at risk of homelessness and are high utilizers of multiple community services. In that time, we really stood up a program in early 2017. You will call us divided up into different bundled, payment bundles. So initially, we did the engagement bundle, bringing in members. We did a care coordination bundle, and then rapidly saw the need for this medical respite bundle, which we implemented in the fall of 2017. Really, in consultation with procurement, we initially suspended competition and just entered into an agreement with the Gathering Inn, who had already been operating similar services funded through Kaiser and Sutter. But then subsequently, earlier, and we've had great success with that program, so you received a CSAC Challenge Award for our Whole Person Care program. And one of the more unique and successful aspects of our Whole Person Care pilot has been this medical respite program. We've been very satisfied with the Gathering Inn's performance on this contract. However, we did send out earlier this fall a letter of interest, asking for any interest from other bidders. We did not receive anything except from the Gathering Inn. So therefore, we are, HHS is recommending that we'll continue this contract with the Gathering Inn for additional two years. And with that, appreciate your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from board members? I just want to say I'm pleased with the way the Gathering Inn has operated this, and I've been involved with him for quite a while, and they really do provide a great service to those people that are in the hospital but don't have, once they're released, they don't have any place to recover. So it's really, really important. So now is the time for any public comment on this. All righty, I will entertain a motion.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to move item 10, Health and Human Services Whole Person Care Medical Respite Unit Operations Agreement with the Gathering Inn. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Now we'll move to item 11, Public Works and Facilities Gold Hill Road Over Auburn Ravine Bridge Replacement Project. You're not Matt Randall.
No, I'm Bob Roman. Chairman Holmes, board members. Bob Roman, Public Works Department. I'm here to request today that you adopt a resolution to award a contract for project inspection, materials testing, construction management, to Drake Hagland Associates in the amount of $598,808. This request also allows our director to, or designates the director to also make changes to the contract up to 10% of the award amount. This materials testing and project inspection, construction management contract allows for the oversight of the bridge replacement of the Gold Hill Bridge at Auburn Ravine. We chair a board aware of the contract to Bridgeway Civil Constructors at the last meeting, and this will allow us to actually oversee and make sure they build the project we want them to build. This project is included in the department's budget and is 100% funded by the Federal Highway Bridge Program. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
All right, any questions from board members? Anyone in the audience wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion. So I heard. That's a motion. All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 11, Public Works and Facilities Gold Hill Road Over Auburn Ravine Bridge Replacement Project. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The item is moved. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Let me go relax now.
All right. Okay, we're going to go into closed session and return at 1:00 for our 1:00 timed item. I'll turn it over to the chair.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to consider two items of existing litigation, the versus Tate versus County, the second is Bjork versus County.
Okay, the Board of Supervisors have returned from closed session, and we'll first hear our report from our county council on closed session.
The board met in closed session to consider Tate versus County. The board received a report on this item and provided direction. The board then heard the item of Bjork versus County. The board received a report and provided direction. This concludes the report back for closed session.
Thank you. Now we'll take up our 1:00 timed item, sheriff's item. This is a 2017 Immigration and Customs Enforcement Access Information Report. This is just our conducting a community forum. Captain Powers, please come forward.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Holmes, members of the board, CEO Leopold. Captain Nate Powers, Placer County Sheriff's Office. I am currently the South Placer Jail Command I am currently the South Placer Jail Commander. This presentation will be short due, in fact, to the sheriff's office. Specifically, corrections has been minimally impacted by the Values Act as compared to other counties in California. As you know, Senate Bill 54, also known as the California Values Act, became law on January 1st, 2018. The Placer County Sheriff's Office has policies in place that are in line with SB 54, and we comply with the state law. The Truth Act requires beginning in 2018, the sheriff to hold the community forum, which this is, and present data pertaining to ICE holds, notification, or transfer requests from the previous year. So I were presenting data from 2017.
Okay, thank you.
We provide information regarding a person's release date or respond to requests by ICE for notifications prior to release only if that information is available to the public or if the inmate has a qualifying conviction specified in Government Code 7282.5. We do not provide work or home information in accordance with the law. In 2017, we received 71 requests from Immigration and Customs Enforcement requesting notification of release or transfer. Of those 71 requests, we gave advance release notice to one who had a qualifying conviction. We do not transfer an inmate to immigration authorities unless authorized by judicial warrant, and none were received in 2017. However, if ICE is present at the time of release, the individual may be taken into their custody. We had two requests from ICE to interview individuals within our jails. Of these, one chose to have the interview, and the other denied the request. This concludes my presentation. I thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Supervisor Uller.
I'm curious, first of all, do we have similar statistics for the prior year about how many ICE hold, notification, or transfer requests that we received versus those that we honored?
For 2016? I would have to check and see if we have those, if we have that data.
Okay. In your, in your practice, has it been consistent that we would receive 71 requests and only have one of those honored?
In the time I've been there, I can only answer for 2017, which I saw. I can kind of go a little bit. I know this year, the numbers are just slightly higher, and the number of transfers are slightly higher, but not by much. I can tell you that.
The number of requests or the number that were honored?
Both.
Okay. I think for appropriate context, it'd be important for us to be able to see the historic data where, what the number of requests were that were honored versus, so that we get some kind of an idea of what the order of magnitude is in terms of how it has changed behavior, if it all, if it has changed behavior in terms of the relationship between local government and the federal government on these related issues. So you don't have any of the information around the one notice that was issued, why perhaps that one notice was, request was honored?
There was, there was a note, I know there was a note in the file to notify ICE upon release because of the qualified or the, he had the charge that was specified under the government code where we could notify ICE.
Okay. Yeah, so if, when you get a chance, if you might be able to get back to me with kind of the historic data, looking at these numbers, that'd be helpful.
I can do that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Grant.
So what you're telling us is out of all of the folks that you had, you know, that were, that had ICE holds on them or whatever, in complying with the law, there was only one that met the threshold with regards to the government code to allow you to release information on?
In 2017, yes.
Okay, one out of 71?
Correct.
And what, are you familiar with what, maybe Sac County or some of the other larger counties?
I've looked at some of the other counties. Their numbers, you know, they may get 200, 300 requests. The number that they actually transfer, I couldn't tell you that, but yeah, we, in comparison to those different counties, like I said, the impact is very minimal to the Corrections Division.
Okay, thank you very much. And that is consistent with what was reported throughout this SB 54 business a couple months ago, right?
Right.
Alright. Seeing no more comments from board members, this is a community forum. Is there anyone from the public that wish to address us on this item? Please come forward. Morning, Paul. Good afternoon, Paul.
Good afternoon. I just have a question. Of those 71 or the 70, why were they denied? Just as a point of reference, those 70 that were denied, the detainer from ICE, why, in general, why were they, why were they denied? Does it have to do with finances, that the, that the ICE is not supplying jail costs, or does it have to do with the crime level of the detainee? Just generally, why are they being denied?
Well, I'm going to assume that, having read the actual code, that there's a threshold of what defense or what charge that they're charged with, and if it exceeds, falls into one of those categories, they can release. Is that consistent?
Which category? SB 54 category or prior to SB 54?
That, I don't know. I'll leave that to the lieutenant or the captain.
Yeah, prior to SB 54, there's a certain criteria they have to meet with charges. It has to do with their criminal histories. There's certain criteria they have to meet.
Captain Powers, can you speak into the microphone for the record, please? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. For us to comply with ICE, they have to meet a certain criteria, whether it be charges, whether it be a criminal history, whether it be a registrant of some sort. If they don't meet any of those criterias, then we cannot comply with the request from ICE to provide their release date prior to release. We do provide ICE with information that's available to the public, and we do direct them to that, to our website, and they can get release dates in there, but for us to officially call them prior to release, they have to meet a certain criteria.
Okay, so the criteria for the 2017 cases, was it different than 2016 or 2015 or prior to?
Well, you have several in there. You have the Truth Act, you have the Trust Act, and now you have the Values Act. So there's many different in there, and some of them are a little confusing, but yeah, it's, it is a little bit different in 2017 between 2016. I'm going to, and I'll pull those numbers for Supervisor Uller, but yeah, the criteria, SB 54 kind of clarified a lot of that for us as far as when we can actually cooperate with ICE and not.
Okay, so, okay, so has anything changed? Should we see any difference in 2018 versus the 2017 numbers? I'm sorry, I'm out of time, I guess.
You, there will be, there will be a difference.
Because the criteria has changed?
Because the criteria has changed, and how we can work with ICE has changed, so there may be a little more increase in the number that we do notify ICE of, but that'll be the biggest difference.
So it, from the categories that are, from the, the changes in the, for 2018, it gives you more leeway to, to accept the detainers, or does it, is it more restrictive?
It gives us a little bit more, it gives us a little bit more clarity in working with ICE and notifying them prior to release.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Is there anyone else wish to address the board on this item? Any more questions from board members? Whoop, here we go. Hello?
It's kind of along the same lines. You had mentioned legislation, I believe.
We need your name, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, Andrea Oren, O-R-E-N. You said they would be, you'd release the information only if there was a qualifying conviction, and you had, you mentioned like a statute.
Yeah, 7282.5.
7282.
Point five, right. 7282.5 of the government code.
Government code, okay. And so if there was, so Placer County is required to follow the government code of the state, so if, if you were to release more information to ICE than, than would be required, you know, the minimum requirements, what would be the ramifications for Placer County?
I can't answer that. I don't know what the ramifications would be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else wish to address the board? Sehna, does that conclude your comments? Captain Powers?
Yeah, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain.
Yeah, thank you so much. That concludes our community forum, and thank you for your participation. We are adjourned.